For Dallas Reski. Michael Flick. Marilyn Kramer. Kara Nieberlein. Rob Pierce. Shelley Reed. David, can't pronounce your last name. For Alex Belata. And we should be having Manny Becerra, an alternate for the city of Reno, but he's not here yet. We have a quorum.
Commissioner Kramer, can you lead us in the pledge of course?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have approval of the agenda. I get a motion. I'll make that motion, Madam Chair. Who could approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we will move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have Bill Miller.
Bill Miller, come on up.
Good evening. Planning Agency members, staff, fellow citizens.
Can you state your name for the record, too?
I was just getting to that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. Go ahead.
Patience. I'm Bill Miller. Reno resident alarmed by the viral-like spread of data centers in northern Nevada with virtually no regulation to ensure our viability as a community for future generations yet unborn. Let me be clear upfront. The issue for me is not data centers, per se. They are our future. Performing critical functions of preserving and retrieving our collective knowledge base, and with AI, performing seemingly miraculous feats of research, analysis, and content creation. The development of these centers represents a giant leap for humankind. The issue is, where do they fit into an industrial structure that does not endanger the ecosystem supporting our future as a civilization? Fact: they consume massive amounts of electricity. A typical 50-megawatt data center consumes as much power as 40,000 houses. Fact: they generate almost no business. Most require less than a dozen maintenance technicians around the clock, yet they consume enough power for a small city. Fact: placing these on the grid with NV Energy will lock us into a future of more and more methane power plants to supply them with enough commercially-produced power. Fact: Reno is already the fastest-warming city in America, increasing in heat by 7.1 degrees on average and 11.1 in summer in just the last 50 years. Fifty years. We don't need to fill our skies with more greenhouse gases for short-term gain. That is a suicide mission we are foisting upon our great-grandchildren. Here's the common-sense solution. Nevada has almost ridiculously abundant sun and geothermal potential. Put the data centers where this potential can be harnessed. It's much easier to run fiber-optic cable than new power lines, transmission lines, drastically cutting permitting time. The power they will produce is green, renewable, reliable, and convenient, literally generated on-site. We can save our future environment, save massive amounts of money, and sensibly grow the Truckee Meadows with people, families, kids, a future, instead of massive power-and-water-consuming behemoths that add nothing to our incredibly beautiful way of life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have additional public comment?
No, that is all.
All right, then, I will close public comment and start with the business of the day. And... Oh, I didn't do approval of the minutes. Let's move on to approval of the minutes.
This is Rob, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we can move on to the business of the day. And before we get started on the first item, are there any disclosures?
Yes, one here. I am making a disclosure... Commissioner Jacaman, I'm making a disclosure to avoid the appearance of impropriety. I'm a traffic engineer with Kimley Horn, a national engineering consulting firm. The Kimley Horn Solar Engineering Team in Las Vegas conducted work on the Dodge Flat Project. The work was limited in nature and is complete. Kimley Horn will not be involved in future work on the project. I personally will not benefit financially or otherwise from the decisions made by this body on these items. Therefore, I will not abstain and will be voting as I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship and because this is not a clear case of disqualifying conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? All right, then, Director Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the day. The first item, 6A, is a public hearing item. It's a regional plan amendment and project of regional significance for the Dodge Flat Solar II Project. We have our policy analyst Nate Kousha to take us through the item.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. As Director Smith mentioned, this is a conformance review and a regional plan amendment for a Washoe County project of regional significance and regional plan mapping amendment for the Dodge Flat Solar II Project. All right, so, this proposal is to establish a 200-megawatt photovoltaic generation facility and to construct a 345-kilovolt substation and a 1-mile 345-kilovolt gen tie line connecting the proposed substation to the already-existing Olinghaus substation in the area. This proposal is considered a project of regional significance for the establishment of a new electric substation, a new transmission line that carries 60 kilovolts or more, and a new facility that generates electricity greater than 5 megawatts. Additionally, a regional plan amendment is required for this proposal to map the new regional utility corridors and sites associated with the substation and transmission lines. So, the project is located in East Truckee Canyon, East Truckee River Canyon at 2505 State Route 447, and it's north of Wadsworth. And it is an expansion of the already-existing Dodge Flat Energy Center facility, which was established in 2018 and approved by this body, as well as the RPGB in that same year. Staff determination is that the PRS conforms with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan and that the regional plan amendment supports the vision, goals, and policies of the regional plan as well. So, as you probably already all know, Policy RC-9 of the 2024 Regional Plan sets the review criteria for a conformance review, and in this case, that is the project of regional significance portion of this proposal. So, for population growth, the proposed photovoltaic generation facility, substation, and transmission line will enable the Dodge Flat Energy Center to provide a reliable local and regional source of power. Does not include any modifications to residential densities as they stand. For regional form, the subject property is located in the rural area, that is, the area outside of the TMSA, and in Washoe County. And this type of large-scale power generation facility is appropriate in the rural area, where there is ample acreage to support this kind of project and really no negative impacts on planned uses within the TMSA itself. For public facilities and services, this proposal would provide utility infrastructure to expand the existing Dodge Flat Solar Facility, expanding the county's supply of renewable energy sources. Materials submitted indicate the Solar Facility will be operated remotely, thus the demand for public services onsite are very minimal. As mentioned, the subject site is located in the rural area, and per Policy PF-4 of the Regional Plan, local governments cannot extend water and wastewater infrastructure from the TMSA to the rural area. And this proposal will be self-contained in terms of any public facilities and services required. Regarding natural resources, the Nevada Department of Wildlife, or Endow, has been contacted regarding this project, and due to the project traversing and impacting wildlife habitats, per comment from Endow, a condition of approval at the City of Reno has been included, requiring the development of a wildlife protection plan, and that will be in coordination with Endow. And this plan will set forth mitigations for a variety of things, including sensitive wildlife species, migratory bird species, raptors, mule deer, et cetera. It's kind of more laid out in the staff report for you. Additionally, the subject site does contain some development constraints areas, or DCA, for public and restricted lands. However, per Policy NR-3, utilities are exempted from the requirements identified in this policy. Finally, for our conformance review criteria, we have regional coordination. And as always, we kind of make sure coordination is at the forefront of all of our work. We worked with the jurisdictional staff and relevant agencies well ahead of time. For this proposal specifically, the subject site lies adjacent to the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe land, and the applicant has been communicating and working with PLPT throughout the process of this, regarding this proposal. So, that was for our project of regional significance portion. For the regional plan amendment, we have Policy RC-10, which outlines the review criteria for that. And we'll briefly touch on these, as most of them are kind of covered in the other section, but we'll touch on how they relate to our regional plan amendment portion. So, the proposal to amend the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to add a new regional utility corridor and regional utility site is not anticipated to influence or impact regional capacities and growth projections, existing and planned developments, existing and planned public facility and service availability, timing, adequacy and fiscal impacts, or natural resources. Again, for the regional plan amendment itself, this is really a mapping amendment, so there's nothing really affecting these for this portion. As far as our last three review criteria for governmental impacts, as mentioned, the applicant has been working with the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe throughout the process, making sure they're aware of what is going on and working through it with them. Additionally, the proposal supports the vision, goals, and policies of the regional plan and the health and welfare of the community by enabling the Dodge Flat Energy Center Facility to provide a reliable and local regional source of power. So, with that, I have two motions on the screen overhead. We would start with the project of regional significance motion, and then followed by the regional plan amendment motion. I'm available for questions, as we also have Washoe County staff available on the Zoom for questions specifically for them.
Okay. Do any Commissioners have any questions? All right, well, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, not for this item.
Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission. Any discussion? I'm ready to entertain a motion on separate motions.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion on the project of regional significance. I move to find that the Dodge Flat Solar II Project of regional significance is in conformance with the 2024 Regional Plan based on the findings listed in this staff report.
Okay, we have a motion?
Commissioner Becerra, for a second.
Oh, we need to note that Commissioner Becerra is here. I don't think we noted that at 6:07. Okay, we did. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And I'm looking for a motion on the regional plan amendment.
Commissioner Becerra, for the record, happy to entertain that motion. If staff could indulge me in popping it back up, though. Please.
I have it here if you want it.
Oh, here it is. Thank you so much. Commissioner Becerra, for the record, I move to adopt RPC Resolution 25-01 regarding an amendment to MAP 3 of the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in this staff report. And I can make all the findings.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Since this does require two-thirds majority, I'm going to go ahead and do a roll-call vote.
Sure, so Carrie Rohrmeier?
Yay.
Dan Lesereski? Oh, sorry, James Barnes?
Yay.
Michael Flick?
Yes.
Marilyn Kramer?
Aye.
Kara Nieberlein?
Aye.
Rob Pierce?
Aye.
Shelley Reed?
Aye.
David Jacaman?
Aye.
And Manny Becerra?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Let's move on to Item B. Any disclosures for Item B?
High Desert Master Plan.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeremy Smith, for the record. This is a public hearing as well, Item 6B. It's a regional plan conformance review for a Washoe County Master Plan Amendment out in Empire. And we have Chris Tolly to give us a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Tolly, Team RPA. This item is a conformance review of the Empire Amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, and that case number is CR-25-005. So, as noted, the proposal is an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, and we'll cover the details on the following slides. Washoe County Board of County Commissioners adopted the proposed Master Plan Amendment at their February 11th meeting. And finally, regional planning staff does recommend that the proposed amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan conforms with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. The regional form map on the right-hand side of the screen, as you can see, the subject site is located northeast of the Truckee Meadows, along the Washoe County and Pershing County line. And the approximately 11.55-acre subject site is located at 7200 State Route 447 and is in the Empire Freestanding Community. Subject site is also located in the rural area, regional land designation. As introduced, the proposed amendment is to change the land use on the subject site from suburban residential to commercial. Additionally, the proposal considered by Washoe County includes a regulatory zone amendment from low-density suburban to general commercial. As you can see on the screen, on the map on the left shows the existing land use configuration of the subject site as suburban residential. And then on the right, it shows the proposed land use configuration with the subject site switching to commercial. And move on to the review criteria. The Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, Policy RC-9, identifies a review criteria for a conformance review of a master plan amendment and/or a project of regional significance. The five criteria listed in the policy and shown on the slide are those that the RPC must consider when evaluating a proposal. We'll briefly step through the analysis contained and the staff report on the following slides. Regarding population growth, the request is again to change the land use designation from suburban residential to commercial. Given this is located in the rural area, the proposal will not appreciably change the projected housing levels. Regarding regional form, the subject site is located in the rural area, again, and also the Empire Freestanding Community. The proposal is consistent with the Empire Freestanding Community as required by Policy RF-9 and with the existing development pattern in this portion of Washoe County. Materials submitted by Washoe County indicate that the proposal will be served by individual water and sewage disposal systems. This meets the regional plan's requirements regarding the provision of infrastructure in the rural area. And finally, regarding regional coordination, Team RPA ensures that regional coordination is at the forefront of our work, and we coordinate with jurisdictional staff and other relevant entities during the conformance review process. Finally, regional planning staff provided, did provide an initial review memorandum for this case. And with that, this does conclude my presentation. The proposed motion is on the screen and also on page 28 of the packet. Both myself or Team RPA staff, as well as Washoe County staff are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for staff? All right, well, this is a public hearing. I will open that up. Do we have any comments?
No, not for this item.
Okay. I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Commission. Any discussion? Or I will entertain a motion?
This is Rob, I'll make a motion. I move to find that the Empire Amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan in conformance with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based upon the findings listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And we'll move on to Item C. Before we get started, do we have any disclosure for this item? Seeing none, Director Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeremy Smith, for the record. Item 6C is another public hearing. It's a regional plan conformance review for a City of Reno Master Plan Amendment for the RHA Carville Drive Project. We have regional planner Shawnee Sousa to give us a presentation on this item.
All right, hi, everyone. Shawnee Sousa, Team RPA, for the record. I'm going to be taking you through a conformance review for the City of Reno, a master plan amendment. This is the RHA Carville Drive CR-25-006 case. So, first, we'll start with a little overview. This is a master plan land use change in an approximately 0.75-acre site. It is composed of four small parcels, but it totals to that 0.75 acres. And we are going from mixed neighborhood to multifamily neighborhood. It's a slight increase in density for the opportunity or potential. So, right now, the max would be MF-14, so a max of 14 units per... 14 dwelling units per acre. And the max with the proposed would be 30. And then to orient you a little bit, on the right, we have our regional form map. And the site is shown in orange, or if you can kind of orient yourself a little better, it's the northeast corner of Sutro Street and Carville Drive. For our determination, we do recommend that this master plan amendment conforms with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. So, here's that same review criteria you saw in the last couple cases. I'm going to take you briefly through each one now. So, first, for population growth, just to give a little background, this site is owned and operated by the Reno Housing Authority, or RHA. Currently, there are five older duplexes onsite with a total of 10 residential units, and six of those are occupied. RHA is interested in densifying the site potentially if this is approved, and, you know, they'd go through a separate review process. This is not a project. This is just for that master plan land use designation, just for the potential opportunity in the future. And they would help current tenants with the relocation and assistance if this should happen. And then, let's see, this proposal for, in terms of population growth, does have that potential, like I said, to marginally increase residential densities, but it will not significantly impact projected housing capacities at a regional level. All right, then, we'll take a look at regional form. On the right is our neighborhood map, and you can see the subject site is hatched in that orange color. And the medium blue color indicates that it is within Tier 1 land. And that is second in our priority hierarchy for development. And this is where we expect to see moderate and varied range of development, both residential and non-residential. Majority of this tier is developed with public facilities generally in place, and this request is consistent with what we see in this tier. And just to expand a little bit, here you can see those existing and proposed land uses. And on the right, it goes over to that brown color from when it was that orange. And this does fit within this area. It is kind of within a smaller cluster of higher-density residential uses. This map doesn't quite really show that actually below it is a specific planning district with a density of 45 dwelling units per acre. So, you can kind of actually see it better in this map. So, you can see kind of that larger parcel is a little more dense. So, yeah, it's within a cluster, and we believe that it is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, when we move to public facilities and services, you can see that the subject site area is developed. And as mentioned, in Tier 1, public facilities and services are generally available and adequate. And this is especially the case for such a small increase in density. Next, for natural resources. No natural resource impacts were identified on the subject site as the surrounding area is well-developed. Finally, we have regional coordination. From the beginning of our process, we sent out an initial review memo, and that's kind of when we work with staff, when the case first comes to them, to identify, you know, any potential issues or to check out the case. So, we talked with City of Reno staff at that time. And they also go and send out different comment letters. We, you know, request if there are any other needs to be sent out. They did send a comment letter They did send a comment letter to Northern Nevada Public Health, and they had no comments or concerns on this case. Finally, we have the motion overhead, and I'm available for questions, or City of Reno staff is as well.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for staff?
Commissioner Becerra for the record. Not necessarily a question. I did just want to maybe echo thoughts on this, because it did come before us, and I remember it. You know, I think it's a great project, especially that Reno Housing Authority is behind it. I think it helps with the increase in attaining affordable housing for the community. I grew up in this neighborhood. I think that the applicant's representative with Rogers, I believe they're here, they did a fantastic job, working with Carter and staff. I think it's wonderful, so just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Becerra. Yes?
Yes, Commissioner Flick. Just a, I guess, just curiosity, are you going to raise the existing structures, or has it gone that far?
So it doesn't go that far. We're just considering the master plan land use designation. There's no project before us, and that will go for review when they get those details. That'll go through the jurisdictional review process.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, well, this is a public hearing, so I will open up public comment. Do we have any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay, with that, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission. I'll consider a motion if there's no further discussion.
On behalf of Reno, Commissioner Becerra, happy to entertain a motion, or at least put one forth. I move to find the RHA Carville Drive Amendment to the City of Reno Master Plan in Conformance with the 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in the staff report.
This is Rob. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Shawnee. Next, Item D, the research about data centers. Director Smith? I take it you're presenting?
Yep, it's going to be me. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeremy Smith for the record, and appreciate, appreciate folks being here to basically watch this and the interest that it's generated. I will say before I start that, you know, we were directed by this body back in January to do some research on data centers. And so, you know, I will admit that I am not a data center expert, but took a good-faith attempt here to try to, you know, contextualize how these data centers fit in with other land uses that we're kind of more used to seeing. And at any rate, here we go. And I will just add one more bit, and that is that even since I've published this just a few days ago, I've gotten feedback since then that's helped me to, you know, address some of that feedback in this report, so it's a living thing, and we're learning as we go here. Okay, so folks probably know, what are data centers, right? Well, they're these big buildings or campuses that really contain the infrastructure for all of this computing stuff that we've been doing late in our lives. So our smartphones, e-commerce, using the internet, streaming services, watching Netflix, right, our military, really anything that has to do with computing, they are an integral part of that infrastructure globally. And they're growing. So this is one of the slides from the report, from the Grand View Research website, and what it shows is that out to 2030, it's predicting a compound annual growth rate of almost 11% in the data center sector. So what that's really indicating is that data is going to continue to grow, the use of computers and phones are going to continue to grow, and therefore, in order to support that, there's going to be need commensurate growth in these server farms and data centers to keep up with that. So we can continue, we can expect to continue to see growth. We have been seeing growth. So that little point at the bottom there talks about a stat that we found during our research, that from 2022 to 2023, there's a 55% increase in the power requirements for data centers. That's a huge jump and a quick move, right? So it is really moving fast. What I've tried to point out here is that there are several places in the U.S. that are functioning as data center hubs so far. The most notable one is the Data Center Alley in Virginia, which is located near Washington, DC, something on the order of 300-plus data centers, and a massive power requirement, well over 2 gigawatts with more on the way. This graph kind of indicates where things are at right now and what's sort of coming down the pike. I saw another graph today, I was continuing to research this, because, you know, we're actively looking at it, and it did actually have Reno on it, but it was probably about, it's in this Cushman and Wakefield study, so if you want to go on the internet and find that, it was a big, had Virginia over here, and then it really went down, and right at the tail end, about the 30th community was Reno, so starting to register on the scene. So types of data centers, this is a really texty slide, and staff tried to get me to change it, but I didn't, because I just wanted to talk about it, right? Really, you know, there's many ways to slice, there's many ways to slice typologies for anything, right? And for data centers, I took the approach in the research of just kind of thinking about it in three bins. There's small data centers, these are like little micro centers that might be in a little business, or an edge data center, couple thousand square feet. Then there's medium-sized data centers that go from about 5,000 up to maybe 500,000 square feet. This is where we're seeing stuff like co-location facilities, where you might rent some of the server space to do your particular business thing. Or maybe these are the very, you know, AI or academic-intensive scientific data centers kind of living in this zone. And then there's the very large data centers, like the Apple Data Center out in the East Truck River Canyon, like the Switch facility out of Tri Center, where they're drawing, you know, 50 to 100-plus megawatts of power, and they have these giant footprint, building footprints of over a million square feet. And so that's kind of how we approach thinking about kind of the different types of data centers, but at any rate, it proves that there is a large range of what constitutes a data center, in terms of size and function. So we looked at three main components of this: power consumption, water use, and land use, and starting with power. So according to US Department of Energy, data centers are one of the most energy-intensive building types that there are, right? Consuming 10 to 50 times the energy of a regular, of a typical commercial office building. And power consumption varies, right, across different land uses, and so we wanted to kind of contextualize this versus housing. One megawatt of electricity can power about 600 homes. So if we think about a recent approval for the web data center, that's equivalent to around 18,000 residences, which, when we look at our future forecasts of housing need for the community based on our population forecast, that's about a third of the homes that we're expecting in the next 20 years. So these data centers, and 30 megawatts is quite a bit of power, and that's how it kind of contextualizes based on residential. There we go. Okay, so this is a table we made off some of our web research, where it's really showing kind of a min-max range of power consumption by different land uses. And I thought, what really jumped out to me is that the minimum for data centers, and how it was reported here, is higher than the maximum for something like a hospital, which you would think is actually a huge power user, or a stadium, which maybe not, might not be turned on all the time, but would be a massive power user as well. So just kind of that, there's the comparison, and it's very clear that data centers are the big power users. So we had a conversation with some staff from NV Energy as part of this research, trying to understand how do they approach planning for this data center, you know, influx, if you will, and they indicated that they're actively planning for data center growth. In their words, they anticipated that for Washoe County, the regular sort of planning that they've been doing is probably going to be enough to manage the data center growth that we would expect to see in the Truckee Meadows proper. However, to the east of our community, in the Tri Center and out in Fernley, where we're seeing, you know, a lot of industrial things starting to happen, it's very likely that these facilities are going to have a huge demand for power, and that's going to impact their planning for how to get that power generated and transmit it. So kind of a two-fold thing, really big stuff to the east, but of course, there's a potential here as well. And, you know, we have the rural area, and we already have a million-plus-square-foot data center, the Apple Center, operating in the rural area in Washoe County, and we have a massive county. So, you know, there are land opportunities for this kind of thing to happen in Washoe County as well, so we'll need to keep an eye on that. They also talked about asking large power users to pay upfront for their costs, which I think is a really good idea, because what it does is it allows us to mitigate to some degree the risk. So what I learned after writing the report is that that does not include the power generation facilities. It is this rule nine that governs that operation to some degree, and again, not an expert, but I'm starting to understand, is that the transmission of the power and the substation is the part that Nevada Energy requires the business to pay for. In fact, they might even require that the substation that takes the high-voltage transmission and turns it into power that you can use in the building is actually owned by the business, and they just pay for that. And then they also ask for the costs for the transmission lines that are necessary, and then over time, NV Energy would reimburse that business for those costs. And part of that is making sure that there's a long-term commitment from the business to take that power. So if the business goes defunct and leaves, then the infrastructure remains part of NV Energy, and the power is there as well, but there's no more payments. And so that helps to mitigate risk. However, you know, the power has to come from somewhere, and given this curve we just saw and our anticipated demand, that is going to mean that there is going to be an increase in power generation facilities. It might not be in Washoe County, but it may be somewhere in Nevada, or maybe somewhere in a nearby state. That power is going to be necessary to power this future of data centers. And so it seems likely that data centers will drive demand for both renewable and fossil fuel power generation. And I think that's really, you know, something that obviously we've got to be careful about, and we have to be watching really closely, because we know that fossil fuel sources are part of our ensemble of energy, but we're trying to go down that renewable route, right? Clearly, that's what the regional plan is looking to promote, and the next slide is going to show that we've been seeing that. Finally, I just want to say that Nevada Energy is not subject to the regional plan. In the state law, there's a very specific point that says affected entities, and it lists many, but it says that a state agency is not affected entity of the regional plan, and also any utility that is governed by the Public Utilities Commission of Nevada. And so I think we can continue to talk with NV Energy and get their experience and participate in their planning, but ultimately, the regional plan does not have purview over power consumption and that power delivery, and in fact, NV Energy, if I'm getting this correctly, is obligated to serve in the state. And so if a land use is approved and it requires energy, they have to figure out how to serve it. Moving on. Okay, so, but we are on the front side of this power generation stuff, transmission, power generation, and substations. PRS, the PRS guidelines, that stands for Projects of Regional Significance, are defined in NRS278.026, and it specifically points out, power generation facilities of 5 megawatts or greater, transmission lines of 60 kilovolts or greater, and substations constitute as projects of regional significance. And we know that's true, because in Item 6A, we just looked at it as a project of regional significance. So for the past 10 years, we've been seeing these come through our shop and through this body for review, and this is the table of those projects that we were able to put together back to 2015. And so all of these are renewable projects. The bulk of them are solar, but there's a couple of geothermal projects in there as well, and in total, it's generated, or has been approved to create, you know, over 1,000 megawatts of renewable energy in Washoe County alone. So it's really exciting to see that we're getting this to happen. There's the evidence, and this is helping us meet that mandate from the state to have 50% of our power coming renewably by 2030. But I will say that just because we see this happening, this has been slated to a large degree to meet existing demand. And so to meet this growing demand, these data centers may in fact be already accounted for, right? So we're going to have to have more generation potential to meet the demand if it continues to grow. So something to point out, we get 1,000 megawatts in 10 years. To keep up with what we maybe anticipate is coming, we may have to have, you know, quite a bit more than that. Okay, I'll just come back one more to that slide. I wanted to point out that 6,700 acres is about our estimate of the actual solar coverage. And, you know, there are some concerns about solar as well. Obviously, it's a renewable energy source, I love solar, I have it on my rooftop, and it's great, but when we were doing our natural resources plan, we heard from wildlife folks that there are concerns about covering the desert with solar panels, and that that has impacts for habitat, wildlife, you know, and all sorts of ecosystem functioning. So it's always a concept of trade-offs when we're talking about these kinds of things, but point is that maybe one size doesn't fit all, and there are concerns with solar, but generally, I think we want to see the renewables grow to the extent possible. And that last bit on that is that 6,700 acres is 0.15% of Washoe County's area, so it's a very small amount. We have some room to grow with this. Okay, so moving on from power, and I'm going to wrap it back around the end with some thoughts on some of that. We also looked at water use, and water use is, and power to some degree, but also water is really about cooling. These data centers generate a ton of heat. Those things are running 24/7, they have hundreds and thousands of computer processes in there, and it's generating a ton of heat. So when I was reading the research, what I found was that there's really kind of two ways to mitigate that heat. One is to directly try to cool down the equipment itself with several methods. Some of those methods might be what you'd find even in your own computer, liquid cooling, which would go on the motherboards, or the hard drives, or the chips, and move that hot stuff away, but in a closed system so that you're not wasting it. In terms of facility cooling, there are many methods to achieve that: air conditioning, just ambient air cooling. There's also this thing called evaporative cooling, which uses a ton of water, right? If you guys remember from your college, you know, science classes, that latent heat, right, is used and captured when evaporation occurs, and it's released when water condenses, but when it's evaporating, it takes that heat out of the system. So it's a way to remove heat, but it's incredibly water consumptive, and so it's a really poor fit for Nevada, terrible fit, unless it's done in such a way that it can be sustainably sourced and in a hybrid fashion, you know, that the water use is not extreme. So that's kind of what we found about cooling. In terms of our climate here in northern Nevada, I think it's attractive to data centers because they're seeking arid, you know, non-hubid environments, and also with a cold season. You know, you don't have to spend as much power on an air conditioner when it's winter time and you can open the windows, and all of a sudden, that cold air is coming in. So some of these water numbers that we've put in here, which are on the next slide, are really kind of extreme cases, right? They're extreme cases, operating evaporative coolers 24 hours a day for 365 days out of the year. That's not going to be the scenario here, but even so, so that might take up to, you know, over 12,000 acre-feet of water for a megawatt? That would be insane in this community, but in a water-rich community, maybe that's okay. Some hybrid approaches seem to push it to about 5200 acre-feet. That's still a massive water use for 1 megawatt. Too high for this region, in my opinion. So in terms of how regional planning can fit into that conversation about water use, we do have a role to play there. Our Project of Regional Significance Guidelines indicate that a PRS review of conformance against the regional plan is triggered if a project requires 625 acre-feet or more of water. That's a ton of water, we don't see it a lot. With a big development of housing, we might see that, but that backstop is there, so we're not going to get 12,000 acre-foot users without a review, right? The Truckee Meadows Water Authority, in talking with them, they actually, you know, are very concerned about the water resource, clearly, and their communication to me was that even at 80 to 100 acre-feet for a single business, they want to take that to the Tumwa Board to make sure that that use is appropriate, and that use of water, because for a single business, that's a lot of water. And generally agreed upon by anyone I've talked to, in the Western Regional Water Commission, Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission at Tumwa, that high-water, single-use business, or high-water-use businesses are not a good fit for our community. And I would just add, I don't have any, you know, necessarily exact plans for how this will happen, but the Regional Water Management Plan is entering into a phase where it's going to be updated, and this concept of water use is something that's been talked about that potentially could be added as a policy. So that's something I'm planning to suggest as we work together with Kim Rigdon and her team at the WRWC to update the Regional Water Management Plan, because that plan is affected entity under the regional plan, and so we are involved. Finally, the Switch hyperscale facility out in Story County, huge facility, is actually kind of operating in a neat, sustainable way to some degree, because it is taking 4,000 acre-feet of treated effluent from the Tumwa facility and utilizing that as part of its cooling scenario out there. Still well below 12,000. In fact, I remember it took years for that water to actually be, to find a use, but back in 2016 timeframe, we adjusted the regional plan. You may have heard in some of these cases that the regional plan generally says, do not extend facilities from the TMSA. If you want to do something out in the rural area, you should be independent. The whole point is we have a Truckee Meadows service area to understand and optimize our services within a boundary. But the public works folks came and asked us if we could, you know, look at a policy review that would allow for this treated effluent to go outside of the TMSA, and in fact, outside of the county, because they needed flexibility, and it has something to do with the Truck River Operating Agreement and the fact that a certain amount of the acre-feet processed at the Tumwa facility comes out of the ground and not out of the river, and therefore can't go back in the river. So in fact, this provides flexibility for them to dispose of that water. So that's kind of a cool, a cool thing that's happening. Okay, so moving on from water, data centers, this is the land use piece, just some high-level stuff. You might not be able to tell, you're looking at a data center. It could be happening in what looks like an office building, or what looks like a typical warehouse, but there are some differences. One of the things is that, well, similar to warehousing, but maybe even more severe, is that there are not a lot of employees in these data centers. They're big footprints with not a lot of employment, and so that's kind of a land use question in terms of highest and best use, and what are we trying to achieve there. Conversely, vehicle trips are very low, because no one's going there, and the parking lots are very small. So in terms of share of trips, that's something that is probably a little bit better for folks, and also the trucks' trips are very low as well, because there's nothing really being delivered. There is a noise component to these things, especially if they have these big cooling towers, or even the hum from the data center itself, or maybe it's the generators, the backup generators that run, you know, once a week, or whatever it happens to be. So the noise is an issue, maybe higher than other industrial, commercial uses, you know, I can imagine that some manufacturing areas are very loud as well, but these things are operating 24/7, they never turn off, and they have massive lighting typically, and a massive, not massive, but certainly a security presence that is always there. And so that's a consideration, you know, in terms of land use. Looking at building size, this table was kind of fun, you know, I put the small, medium, large there, kind of looking at those size ranges for those different kind of data centers, and then compared that by looking at the assessor data, which tracks a use on a parcel and a square footage of the building on a parcel. So I was able to take that data and basically kind of create a range of what are we seeing in these more traditional industrial types? So for like manufacturing and flex spaces, we're seeing a range of, very small, like 500 square feet, up to almost a million, but on average, they're somewhere around 20,000 square feet, and the median's actually smaller. Every time I look at this data, it's very positively skewed, so there's just a lot of small stuff, and then fewer and fewer, but some very large stuff, which kind of drags the mean up. That's why I like to also show the median. But point is, I think, the point I'm trying to make here is that the data center use fits in the size ranges of existing industrial uses. It's not, it's not always this giant thing, and in fact, we were able to look at seven data centers that we could source, four of them from the Washoe County assessor data, three of them that were recently brought forth at Reno and approved, to get a feeling for how big they are. Now, the Apple Center I mentioned is 1.2 million square feet, but the rest are kind of smaller, with the web data center being, you know, almost 100,000 square feet. I wasn't able to find the power usage on some of these, but I did get some information, thanks folks for that, about some of these that were recently approved. So web, looking at around 30, opedan, not 5, but more like 8 megawatts probably, and that Keystone data center that was approved, looking like around 7. So those are the three that recently came through at Reno. So those are the three that recently came through at Reno. What I learned at the 11th hour of writing this report was that there's more out there than these seven. This is what was, I sort of found as the low-hanging fruit. But then as I started looking, I found something called Data Center Map. It's a really cool online map tool. It listed probably 10 different data centers that aren't on this list right now. Also, we have a Business Point dataset from Data Axel. We use it for the RTC modeling of employment. And I looked in there, there was about 67 entries in the North American Industry Classification Code 521810, I think was what it was. But it's a six-digit code, right? There's this series of codes that describe businesses. And 51 is a two-digit code for information, and then further on, it describes, okay, these are where you're going to find data centers. But in terms of the sizes, I still need to do more research on that. Some of it looked like maybe it was a web design business. So out of that 67, maybe there's 20 that are actually are functioning as data centers. But that's work we want to continue to sleuth out and put into our regular TMRPA land use tracking stuff and make sure we got a good handle on this. Okay, want to talk about the employment aspect. It really does seem to be one of the least favorable, if you're worried about employees, you know, per square foot, kind of a concept. When you look at something like retail, you might have square footages per employee that are as low as 250 square feet. For something like warehousing, you're looking in this 1,500 to 3,000 range. So that means that for every 3,000 square feet of building, you have one employee. So if the number is lower, you get more employees, more bang for your buck. With data centers, it can be upwards of 5,000 square feet per employee. So as mentioned, it's a very, it's not a very employment-rich, right, scenario, because it's computers doing their thing with very little intervention. And in fact, when I worked for the phone company years ago, it was very common that folks were remoting into these data centers. You know, employees are utilizing this stuff, but they're just not onsite. How about trips? You know, something that comes up all the time in our work is traffic. And that's, you know, obviously an important concern. It's something that the regional plan statutes indicate that we ought to be looking at. And this is where data centers are actually kind of better in terms of the traffic they produce compared to these other uses. If you look at this fourth column, at the very bottom is data center, it's 1.1. So trip generation, average daily trips per 1,000 square feet, 1.1. Compare that to retail at 37.75, right? So very big difference there. And also look at the truck trip share. That's a big, important factor as well. Data centers don't have a lot of trucks, whereas manufacturing or logistics and warehousing are going to have a large number of trucks. And that obviously comes up often as a concern for compatibility, especially with residential. So in terms of land use compatibility, you know, kind of wanted to take a look at the trade-offs, looking at, you know, sort of positives and negatives maybe. So up top, we've got the similar building types, construction methods, sizes, fitting into the existing industrial and to some degree, commercial setting. We have a low number of vehicle trips and we have a small fraction of trips by trucks. But on the flip side, we've got brightly lit buildings all night, potentially noisy implementations based on, you know, maybe there's some cooling towers or equipment hum. And then we have this employment, sort of paucity of employment in the building. And so that kind of leads us to believe that this kind of use is more compatible with industrial, commercial land use areas, as we've been stating, versus being near residential. Okay, so that was kind of the fact-finding mission, right? That was the fact-finding mission and what we found. And of course, there's more, there's more to it out there and, you know, we could probably go for a long time. But we want to throw out some conclusions and then kind of open it up for discussion. So first off, we read the Urban Land Institute paper, and it suggested some strategies for local jurisdictions that they could do to try to guide the data center use in their jurisdiction. And it kind of centered around specifying geographic locations, and that can be done in a number of ways. You could have an overlay district. You could change your zoning types. You could put it, map them in your master plan, right? You could create these different kind of spatial approaches. But really, what we found is that, you know, we operate up here, regional planning, we're making sure that we have conformance with the master plans and that the decisions that are being made at the locals are in with that vision of what we're trying to do overall. But really, for the parcel level approvals, that is a jurisdictional function, and they are the, in fact, the bodies that can apply a condition of approval we cannot. And so if there was something about a project that said, hey, you know, if you just did this, it would be acceptable, we wouldn't be able to do that. And in fact, those three data centers that came to the city of Reno did not require this process at regional. They were, they went through the city of Reno process, clearly, and had to go through that, but it didn't trigger a master plan amendment and it didn't trigger, they didn't trigger projects of regional significance. And so I think what we're really trying to say is that we suggest that, you know, we can, we're happy to work with local jurisdictions, we do it all the time, but that, you know, collectively, we come up with some strategies of how we want to approach this in our community. But really, I think the power lies in the ordinance level with the local jurisdiction. I think we want to closely follow NV Energy's moves and how they work with the PUCN to update their Integrated Resource Plan. We learned that they recently updated it last year with a certain set of assumptions on energy demand. Typically, that's a three-year renewal process, but because of the interest in this region with data, I think primarily data centers, they're looking at that again this year. And so that process is happening right now, as I understand it. And in fact, if you get, we'll put this presentation online, and there's a link to their website talking about the Integrated Resource Plan. I think it's something that we should be watching closely and get involved with, you know, just to offer our thoughts. Certainly this, these two things, I think certainly we're going to do as regional planning. We're going to continue to track the data center requests and approvals, the use in our land use modeling work. I'm going to dig out those missing facilities and expand that list, right, of data centers that we know about. And just, you know, we're constantly looking at the future and what we can expect, how many people we can expect, what kind of jobs can we expect, where are they going to locate, where can they locate? And it's an ever-changing scenario. So that's part of the regular work that we do. And I think now that we've learned about, you know, kind of the importance of data centers, that that's going to have more of an emphasis as we look at that. And in fact, that is really a big next step that I'm proposing for our agency, is that we take a deep dive into those pieces of our work and get them updated and also documented and transparent. Also, we're going to continue to meet our statutory mandate to review projects of regional significance whenever we have those conditions that we did in Item 6A, the power generation, the power transmission and substations. And I think we're going to want to start looking at it in terms of what's driving this demand. Is this related to Nevada Energy's Integrated Resource Plan? Is this now, we're seeing the facilities come in that are the response to the demand? So that's going to become a consideration, I think, in our review. There's one thing I think I missed that I want to go back and say. This bullet here, under the Integrated Resource Plan, there's concern that the demand for data centers and this land use is going to drive up existing customers' rates. Now, I talked with Nevada Energy, and they have strategies to try to avoid that, but that doesn't mean that it may not be realized nonetheless. So I think it's really important that we watch for that and that we're on guard to ensure that it's appropriate if that does happen. And it's not, you know, a rampant rate increase. I think what we want to say is that we don't want existing ratepayers to fund the proliferation of data centers, right? So on the radar. Okay. Here's kind of where I feel like we should move forward, because we are doing a lot and there's only five of us. But I was happy to do this, I think it's this important work that we did. Looking at these data centers, obviously, in emergent use, we have a role to play in the energy sector, and we want to be aware of what's going on. But if we want to go forth and do some more work on this topic, it's time to ask the Regional Planning Governing Board for their blessing and their direction, because they ultimately are the leadership body of this whole entity, and we want to make sure we're keeping them in the loop and not getting too far in front of our skis. And when we do that, I think data centers is too narrow a focus to bring to them. And in fact, we should be looking more holistically at how TMRPA intersects the energy sector in our region, because we clearly have the PRS guideline approach and the NRS stuff. We've got some policies in the regional plan, which came from a report that was done back in 2010, the Regional Utility Corridor Report. And those policies got created, and we're doing this job of mapping sites and mapping corridors. But that work really hasn't been reviewed since then. And so it's a worthwhile time. I think it's the right time, it's worthwhile effort to bring that forward and seek that direction from the governing board. And in fact, at April 17 meeting, we're looking to bring strategic work plans, our strategic work plan for the agency for the next fiscal year. And so, you know, per the recommendation of this body, if you want to see us bring that forward, I would say we intend to bring that along with this data mapping, housing, sort of thrust that we're going to do, a review of TMRPA's role and how we approach energy, generation, transmission, the substations, and this whole picture that we're facing now. Okay, with that, happy to entertain any questions, and I really appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. I've got to commend you and the staff on this report. I mean, there was a lot of information, and it was obvious you guys put a lot of work into this, and I really appreciate your efforts. So with that, I'll open it up to questions from any of the commissioners.
Sure. Commissioner Bessar for the record. First off, I do want to thank you for this initial insightful and refreshing report on data centers, Jeremy and staff. It's been a merging land use that has kept us on our toes in the city of Reno, to say the least, the last few months. For the last few months, we've also had quite a bit of public engagement, which has been nice. It's driven a lot of conversation. It's allowed our particular body to maybe do more pointed questions amongst all stakeholders in the room. And so while I have a few questions, I wanted to ask Madam Chair if you'd be open to opening it up for public comment first, which might allow the rest of the body to get more insight into the questions we might ask.
Is that an option? It's not a public hearing, but we can open it up for public comment. So I would be more than happy to allow the public to comment on this.
We, sorry, we also have Carrie Romeyer on Zoom with a question or a comment.
Okay. I'll let Commissioner, our Chair, Romeyer, ask her question first. Thank you.
Oh, I also had a question kind of about the public comments. I heard there were people in the room, but my question can wait if we choose to do public comment now.
Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I'm assuming we have public comment on this.
Yeah, we have a few this time. Yeah, so we have Jordan DeShale, followed up by Robin Palmer, Kathy Folkersen, and Henry Dalton.
All right, we'll take them in order and...
I'm Jordan DeShale.
Okay. Oh, you're going to take a picture first? All right. All right, come on up. You have, you have three minutes, and please state your name again, too, for the record.
Hi, I'm Jordan DeShale, for the record. I'd just like to thank very much for that report. It's been very tiresome, to say the least, to try and get some kind of report from the city of Reno that even rivaled that. So I'm a student at UNR, getting my degree in environmental engineering in May. I'm also a representative of Reno Sunrise Movement, which is a small, or a chapter of a larger environmentally focused group of young people. I would like to bring up a point that came up at the last city council meeting where the web, or not the web, where the Opodan Data Center came for an appeal of the denial that came from the planning commission. And that is that with evaporative cooling, you are using all of that water and you don't get any of it back. With other types of industry, a lot of it is used, but then it is treated and it's returned to wherever it came from, or it's moved on down the river. And with evaporative cooling, that goes in the atmosphere, it's gone forever. So just wanted to bring that up as well. I would also like to recommend that in any sort of maybe backstop that you would have for water use, maybe say, instead of that 625 acre feet per project, instead it would be better to do something like, we're using this amount of water per employee that we have, because that isn't, that is the thing where a lot of these people are remoting in, they're not actually Renoites, they're not actually even in Reno, they're coming from other places. And that is what leads into my next point, which is that at another public hearing for another data center, there was a land developer that came up and said, well, I work on building these projects, and there's a constant revolving door of technicians coming in and out for servicing the data center, like computers. But the thing is, I also, well, I work at UNR in the environmental engineering lab, and we have very fancy technology, very like high-tech, not high-tech, but very complicated instruments that students aren't necessarily trained on how to service. So instead, our professors that run our labs have a contract with whoever owns that instrument, and they send technicians in from out of state. A lot of time, they come from California. So again, they're not actually coming from Reno, they're not bringing, well, they're bringing travel business to Reno, but they're not providing jobs for Renoites. That is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And what was the next comment, next person?
It is from Robin Palmer.
All right, come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Robin Palmer, and I am a climate and Trucking Meadows community advocate. I understand you and the plant, Regional Planning Agency have limited authority regarding energy usage of projects. But nonetheless, I would like to quote from Dr. Smith's report, and thank you for this fine report, what he was told by Nevada Energy, and he touched on this, a data center is required to front 100% of costs for new energy infrastructure. The businesses are then paid back over time, et cetera, et cetera. And then the end of the paragraph, it says, "with the construction of new energy facilities or transmission." The devil's in the details. And I was hoping that Dr. Smith might address some of these details. It's unclear if this 100% applies to all data centers, regardless of the size of the data center. It's unclear what costs are included, labor. It's unclear if there are situations that exempt a data center from paying 100% of these costs upfront. It's unclear if it's in today's dollars or if it includes inflation. It's unclear what happens if there are cost overruns. The three data centers that were recently approved by the city of Reno included discussions of these data centers paying for infrastructure costs, but this is the first I've heard that these costs would be paid upfront. The 2024 Nevada Energy Integrated Resource Plan, approved in late 2024, prevents, permits Nevada Energy to build two new gas-fired, greenhouse gas-emitting turbine peaker plants to meet projected increasing energy demand, purportedly to have limited use during daily or seasonal peak energy demands. The load forecast for 2024 Integrated Resource Plan is driven by projected data center development. The cost, $573 million. I've heard no mention of the three recently approved data centers contributing an amount proportional to their energy needs to meet this $573 million price tag. The IRP Integrated Resource Plan is generally updated every three years, so we could have expected another IRP in 2027. However, Nevada Energy had a consumer session last week to garner input on an IRP update that is... Oh, shoot.
If you can just finish your last thought, I'll allow you the extra time. Not too long, though, just finish your last thought.
Uh, let's see, what's my last thought?
Well, you were in the middle of something, so I want you to finish it.
Well, so I just, it's unclear to me whether future data centers would be required to pay their contribution to the next $500,000 upfront. I'm not opposed to data centers, but I want data centers to be sustainable, use clean, alternative energies, and pay their own way. After all, growth should pay for growth.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, we have two more. So we have Kathy Folkersen next.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Folkersen. I'm facilitator of Third Act Nevada. We're a national organization of people who are committed to a livable planet. A recent AP study showed that the last decade was the hottest on record, that we now have the most emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, now than over the last 800,000 years. So we're moving fast. I commend Dr. Smith and his staff for this report. It's fabulous to have this amount of information for the public, as well as for planners, for policymakers, to rely on data. The public has been going to Washto County, to city of Reno, to planning commission meetings. I try to gather my own data. Things are not always transparent, especially with regard to NV Energy, and so I really appreciate having policy analysts working on this to gather the data. I'm very thankful for Dr. Smith for doing a deeper dive into NV Energy's statements that data centers are required to pay all costs upfront. And in fact, we've had data centers make that statement at a Reno city council meeting, fully believing that he was revealing the truth about his situation, when in fact, what they were paying for was a portion of the P-Vine substation and the transmission lines to bring the power to them, not for any of the power generation, which is where many of the fundamental costs lie. So unless these data centers bring their own energy, BYOE, in a sustainable way, ordinary Nevadans will end up paying for the generation of this power, and that will fall onto rate payers. And so I really appreciate the recommendation to monitor the expansion of data centers. The 2025 IRP that NV Energy just presented on last week, I believe, estimates a 7,000 megawatt increase. I'm working to confirm that. Their presentation is not available publicly. I wrote that in my notes, so hopefully someone can confirm that. That is a huge increase over last year's IRP. Again, thank you. Thank you for making formal recommendations to local jurisdictions to develop ordinances and processes to review and approve these entities. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
One more. So lastly, Henry Dalton.
All right.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Henry Dalton, for the record. I want to start with a land acknowledgement that this land originally belonged to the Wasu, Nuuu, Niwe, and Numu peoples. As a young resident, I would like to ask for some guarantees and changes around data centers moving forward regarding their resource usage specifically. First, I would like evaporative cooling to be banned in Reno in favor of closed-loop cooling that reduces, that reuses the same water rather than evaporating all of it off. While Reno and northern Nevada has far more water availability than southern Nevada, which has already adopted that stipulation around data centers, I think this is an important measure to protect the Reno area, to focus towards the future. Secondly, I want guarantees that these data centers are not just going to suck value away from Reno in using our resources and giving nothing in return. As you may know, there's a 75% tax abatement for data centers which employ greater than or equal to 10 regular employees per year. Those do not have to be Renoites, and based on statistics, very likely not to be. I acknowledge that this is at the state level, and while there are a few things that commissions like this one or the Reno City Council can do about that, perhaps there is a way that we can require these data centers to give back to Reno through their usage. I think we should specify an amount of consumption and usage for these centers, likely based on power size and usage. Those would be something that would be further explored, that needs to be given at least at cost, if not for free, to either the city of Reno Sparks and/or public universities like TMCC or UNR. This would be a form of tax if they're not paying their full property taxes already. The computer science program at UNR, which I am proudly graduating from in May, does not have access to some of the better data center infrastructure for research due to its insane cost, and similarly for TMCC and DRI. If you've looked at something like the cost of Amazon Web Services, like EC2, this is a service which lets you rent CPU usage from one of their many cloud data centers, it is incredibly high, even with that cost reducing year over year as there are more available data centers and its computing power continues to become cheaper. I would like to mention that the Opodin Data Center is marked as 5 megawatts, and he did mention this as well, but it is actually slated to use about 8.5 megawatts, and it may or may not be similar for the web, and it was similar for the Keystone Data Center. These amounts marked on the report are the critical power usage according to the applicants of these centers, and planning around that usage does not account for what will likely be the actual usage of these centers. Lastly, Reno, as mentioned earlier during public comment, is the fastest warming city in the country. Global warming is the greatest existential threat facing our species today. If we do not look forward in how we plan at every level and in everything we do, including commissions like this, we will make ourselves extinct, and I'm not saying that for dramatic effect. If our interests are purely economic, there will be nobody alive in 100 years or even less to enjoy those economic benefits. My peers and I have been born into quite a horrible fate. We have to watch the only planet we've ever known as a species be destroyed by a few corporations more and more, year after year, and watches these effects kill people directly or indirectly for the short-term game of a few people and their stock portfolios. This week, in specific, is once again the warmest week ever recorded compared against itself in previous years since we've kept records. If we do not plan for the future and change our behavior, there will be no future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any more public comment?
That is it.
All right, well, we will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission. And are there any further questions?
Commissioner Becerra for the record. Thank you so much, and thank you for opening it up for the public, so we can just get some additional insights as a body. A few questions, maybe first to kick it off for Jeremy. Do you and staff need a new motion from this body this evening for further engagement or research with the governing board, as we did two months ago for this initial research?
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy. With the record, I think it would be good to do a motion to accept the report and recommend that we take to the governing board as part of that strategic planning work, a more holistic, not just a data center, but to include data centers, you know, a holistic look at TMRPA's role with energy.
Fantastic. I am happy to make that motion, I guess, towards the end when this body's done with their line of questioning. So on that, and reflecting on the early data center approvals in Reno that you also mentioned, and now having the benefit of this comprehensive report, are there specific areas where local planning efforts could be strengthened to ensure future projects are more aligned with regional sustainability and infrastructure goals?
Thank you, Jeremy. With the record again, I don't have that information right now, Commissioner Becerra, but it's something that we could map out and work, I think, with the jurisdictions on. We would want to do that, not in a vacuum.
Thank you. And one follow-up, and I'll kind of yield for others to chime in. Would you mind walking us through what guardrails currently exist, or perhaps not? I did hear a little bit about it during the presentation, but just more for clarity, what guardrails currently exist at the regional level in cases where a local jurisdiction approves a data center that perhaps should have triggered a PRS, a project of regional significance, but didn't?
Thank you, Jeremy. Smith, for the record, again, that's a great question. It's pretty rare that that occurs, but we have dealt with that in the past. I think we've gone and done a retroactive review when that occurs. We're constantly working with the local jurisdictions on this, and as Shawnee mentioned in her report, you know, we've really bolstered our initial review memo. And so we're receiving all of the development review memos from the three jurisdictions, and we're not relying on them to tell us that something has triggered our review. In fact, we're perusing every single one of those cases, and we're identifying in some instances that, hey, in fact, this needs a regional review. So, you know, we're really trying to head that off the pass, but if that were to occur, you know, we would address it retroactively to some extent.
Great, thank you again. And again, happy to make a motion for accepting the report once we're all finished here, but I believe Chair R. Meyer might have a question.
Yeah. Did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I did, thank you. I also want to say thank you to Dr. Smith and all of the TMRPA staff. That report was really helpful, perhaps the best we've seen, very comprehensive in its literature review. I think it highlighted all of the, you know, pros and cons that come with this new land use that is very different than anything we've seen in terms of its consumption. I wanted to ask, you know, I think, building on Commissioner Becerra's point, it's maybe that the information provided in the applications isn't consistent with the data, for example, presented here today, what we learned about evaporative cooling, for example, and the amount of perhaps acre feet or gallons per day of actual usage. When you're doing those kinds of conformance review proactively of the intake projects, are you able to sort of flag that? Because I, right now, there's no technical studies that come in with these conditional use permit applications, so I'm wondering if we're just at the discretion of what an applicant is telling us. Maybe they're labeling it 5 megawatts, but perhaps it's actually 9. Maybe they're telling us it's 7 acre feet of water, but perhaps it's actually many, many more. So how does regional take a look at those intakes and sort of discern what could be conformance review, or where would that fail-safe take place?
Jeremy Smith, the record, I think it's an excellent question, and I'm going to start by saying I don't necessarily know. I think we've learned a lot by doing this report, and we'll probably be looking now, going forward, for that kind of information, but I don't know what sort of, what we can implement that could sort of curtail the mischaracterization of these projects when they are submitted. So I think, again, I think when we started this, when you first, the RPC first asked us to go about doing this report, one of the first things we did is bring together local jurisdiction planning staff, and let them know what we were doing, and that we wanted to work as partners. And so I think following this and, you know, thinking about what I've learned today and heard, that would be a topic that we could address in a meeting with local jurisdiction staff, and talk together about, you know, ways that we could collectively move forward to address those inconsistencies, and to try to make sure we're capturing appropriately when these projects trigger the regional review.
Thank you. I really appreciate it, and I also wanted to say your recommendation at the end of your presentation for bringing this in the larger umbrella of generation and transmission to regional government, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Commission?
This is Rob. I just got one. Jeremy, nice job on that report. I appreciate that. I would just ask that when you go back to the governing board, that you would please take a look at the land use designations, even though they may be commercial, if they're up next to residential because of the heat, light, and the noise that are involved with these, that you would please possibly just look at that? Because if you back up to a residential neighborhood, even though the land on the other side of the fence is designated as commercial, it could create problems. But other than that, great, great job, thank you.
Any other questions?
Say so.
Of course, you may.
Commissioner Flick, it's not really a question, I guess. Sorry. Commissioner Flick, I guess making an observation, and you mentioned it earlier, you know, all these decisions are trade-offs. You know, when you, when you look at this, you know, would you rather have a data center or would you rather have another 18,000 people here with their cars and with the, all the associated services that go along? And that's, that's sort of the balancing act that the local governments are going to have to do. Now, the 18,000 people aren't going to get here overnight, but over a period of time. And, you know, in some instances, maybe you'd rather have the data facility versus all the additional people if we don't get some more roads built around here. So it's a very interesting dilemma. My personal preference, I'm not all that excited about all the computers, anyway. But they're here, and, you know, we got to live with it. But that's all I'm saying, is that we, you know, all sides of the argument have to start weighing the pros and cons, and what would you rather have? Because something's going to happen, one way or the other, and to try to come up with the best solution for the whole community, both short-term and long-term, but let's face it, we got to worry about short-term, too. And it's not going to be an easy decision walking forward, but if we work together on it, we can come up with the best solution. May not be the perfect one, but it might be the best one. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your perspective, Commissioner Flick. Any other further questions? What do you need from this body, other than you accept the report and bring a recommendation to the governing board? Is there any other, is there anything else you need from us?
I think, Madam Chair, Jeremy Smith, the record. I don't think so. I think if you were to make a motion to accept what we've done, and then, you know, recommend that we include, and I really would prefer to, you know, include data centers, but, you know, look at the expanded role of TMRPA in terms of regional utility corridors, energy transmission and generation, you know, the whole nine, everything that we're doing per our policies, guidelines, statutes, you know, a recommendation to the governing board that this body believes that that is good work for this agency to be doing, and that we should be including it in our strategic work plan going forward.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, Commissioner Jockman, if I may, I would, I would like to say that, and thank you again for the presentation, I would like to get a better understanding of, obviously, the items that come before this body as a project of regional significance. We take a look at what is coming on for power generation. It sounds like it's a little bit murkier with regard to what is coming before this body for power consumption, so certainly some added information about that would be great, even an hour in general.
Thank you. All right, I'll look for...
Great. Well, yes, I think I could respond quickly. This is Jeremy, for the record. Jeremy Smith. For the record, yeah, power consumption is not historically something that we're, is part of our purview. It's because of that stipulation that a utility company that is governed by the PUCN is not an affected entity under the regional plan. So if there was a utility company that wasn't governed by the PUCN, then in fact, it might may qualify in that case. But, you know, when you look at the contents of the regional plan statute, which is that NRS 278, oh, two, seven, four, it's the one that really kind of describes the eight things that the regional plan really ought to be addressing, it really comes down to the five domains that we covered in our public infrastructure plan work we just recently did, which are potable water, wastewater, education or schools, transportation, and then flood and stormwater. So those are very clearly in our purview. And then the energy transmission, or the energy component, rather, comes from those project of regional significance statutes. So it's not, it's not contained in the contents of the regional plan statute. So happy to continue to, you know, work on that, and I think that is the appropriate move, because, as I mentioned, you know, the staff that created the regional utility corridor report no longer works at regional planning, and we have these policies, which I think are good policies in the plan, we have like six or seven energy-related policies, but I'll just, in full transparency, during the 2019 plan, we just kept them the same and moved them forward, and likewise in our recent update. And so it really is, it's time to evaluate that, and I think the timing is perfect, given this emergent use and the, you know, the concern that we all have for this power generation demand, so. Yeah, absolutely, I think we'll make it part of, you know, clarifying exactly where that's standing.
Did you have a follow-up question?
Yes, please. So on that note, because you had a slide about the number of data centers that had come before these various jurisdictions, so have none of those come before this body? And will any come before in the future, barring a change?
That's correct. Chairman Smith, the record again, none of them have come before this body, to my knowledge, and a reason that they would would be they trigger the PRS guideline, or it requires a change to the master plan. If to allow the use... If, if to allow the use at a given jurisdiction requires them to, maybe there's a residential parcel and the--
Landowner is seeking to change it to industrial to allow for a data center--
--project, that master plan change would be like the cases we saw today, that would come before this body. And at that time, we would address why, you know, the master plan change is occurring, and I think we could couch it to some degree with the review in terms of the energy component.
Thank you.
Any others, any other questions?
Not sure, but question, but I think, would you like a formal recommendation?
Yeah.
Sure, is there--
We're looking for a motion right now.
Sure, is there preferred language? Or do you want me to just?
Unfortunately, I didn't create a preferred, I didn't know where exactly it was going to go. This is moving really quick, so I would just hope you can, you can--
Sure. Yeah, yeah, let's do it. All right. But as I make it, we do have a joint meeting between Reno City Council and Reno Planning Commission in June, and I think you mentioned about working with local municipalities. Would like to have Dr. Smith and his talented staff there, so just put it on your calendars and that'd be great. So feel free to ask me to modify this, but I recommend Dr. Smith and staff's report on data center to be presented or, and accepted by this board and presented to the governing board and to continue their work and include it in their strategic work plan moving forward.
That sounds good to me.
This is Rob, I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jeremy, I just--
And what I didn't, what I knew--
And I feel-- Getting all the data center requests is probably my burden, so good luck on your ventures with the council and doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. I will just mention, though, that I do appreciate that sentiment, and I would just underscore, though, that it's great that this is before this body, before all local municipalities, because this could come to Sparks, right? This could be at the county level, so it's, it's really good for us to all be at the table and get a sense of what we're all do, what we're all doing, what we're all facing, and how to respond to it kind of cohesively.
Yes, I agree, because it is a new challenge that we've never seen before, I mean, more recently. So we have a motion and a second.
And I just, I just, this is Rob, I just wanted to add that our codes in the past do not address this, so going forward, that's why I was asking that if you would talk with the governing body about that, because this is a brand-new thing to, for the area. So anyways.
Right. Any other discussion? All right. We have a motion to accept the report and bring recommendation to the governing board. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to reports. Director Smith, I'll let you get started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeremy Smith, for the record, a brief report. I just want to start by thanking staff for helping me. I didn't do this on my own. I appreciate the accolades, but it's really team effort, so, and also appreciate the interest and the information. You know, people are keen to talk to us when we ask questions. The public interest is, is great to see, so thank you very much for, for that participation. One fun thing that's coming up, I thought I would tell you guys about, is on April 10th, I'll be joining a few governing board members who are going down to Orange County to do a tour of the Orange County Water District, some of their affluent treatment facilities. They're pretty advanced and some of those methods are, try to be employed here as part of the One Water Nevada Innovation Center, so we're excited to do that. I'll, I'll report back at the end of April on how that goes. And then I guess the next piece would just be that our next meeting will be here in this room, April 24th. Thank you very much.
All right. Are there any member reports? Seeing none. We have legal counsel report.
I have nothing to report, so I really don't need to turn on my microphone. Thank you.
No report. Moving on, any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none. I will open it up for our last public comment of the day. Do we have any public comment?
We don't.
We do?
No, we don't, sorry.
Oh, we don't? Okay. Then I will close public comment. Any written correspondence?
No, we do not.
All right. Well, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.